Comment, you wanna kick it off?
Uh, yes, Daniel. So today's first time also it's been ping me one problem like he he's not able to see the. Uh, category icon level, icon border for parent key food. I debug the issue and found it, let me see what I could. Inside database, uh, we have, we don't have value for this parent key food. So see, can I see my screen?
Yeah.
So see icon border color is null inside of database, it is coming from the DTV. Someone need to add it there.
Which icon is this for still?
I mean, I mean ping me. It is a picture Italian for.
Oh, I mean, I mean, okay, so yeah, um. Yeah, remember we were saying yesterday the icon color changed on um, the food and drink map markers? Which um, he said it was back in, cuz it's coming back now, why, why do you think it's coming back now?
So in fact, we, we are reading from the database and database doesn't have value. You can see it is there.
Yeah, but it does, I mean, it has every day up until two days ago.
Although like currently the four doesn't have value, I can see like.
Yeah. So, where did it go?
Yes, how's that even possible?
Show me, show me a different, show me a different category, show me like home services.
And so this is category key. Oh, so when it is coming, icon border color.
See, and um, so there's other colors, there's center wheel icon color. Um, so, all of those are coming back. Let me see, now go back to the food and drink one. All, cuz I see three, four columns, one, two, three, four for color. Right?
Color, center, wheel, icon, center, wheel icon color, and icon border color.
Uh huh. Okay. Um. Alright, it makes no sense that it stopped coming through. Um. Give me one second, I'm just checking this out. Uh, go back to uh. Go back to the home services?
Home services?
Yeah. I'm suspecting that they share a color. Um. Now, these are three different hex codes, right?
Different hex code, correct.
Um.
So do we have somewhere, have you uh, written somewhere then can update it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's there. Let, let me check something.
Jerry, like if you give me how it is possible, it's going blank?
Uh, what is it in QA? Is it different in QA?
Yeah, it's um, well, this is QA, it's there in production. Yeah, so, so we have it obviously in production, and we can go get it from there. But still, the mystery of why, I know it's got to be related, Amin is saying it's not, but it's gotta be related to the work you did because. It coincides with the work you did, it's, it's been there every day for years. And then, he did some work to the map, now it's not there.
Yeah, wait, uh, so.
But that, but he can't, he can't affect it just from the database, right? So maybe it was being called from a different place?
Maybe, let me, let me just get this straight, a minute, so, looking at QA right now, and you're saying that something is not there?
Icon border color.
Icon border color, and it's not in QA?
It is not in QA, but it is there in production. What? Are you sure?
It, it's coming now yet.
Wait, wait a minute now, let me, so if I go to production right now, the color should be all?
Icon border color.
Uh, okay, hold on. One second.
I don't ever remember there being data in that column.
No, the, in production, it is correct.
It is current in there, he is really much than different fields, like then border color here.
Right.
See, yep, icon border color is null here also.
That's what I'm suspecting, it's, that's why I wanted to see if they were sharing a hex code in home services. Because I think it's the same color as what goes, like if you go to the subcategory wheel, you can see there's. Two different yellows, there's a little circle around each icon, that's like a darker yellow, and then there's a color inside of. The um, wheel, which is like a lighter yellow. And I think we're using the outside color, so I thought they'd be the same hex code. But evidently not, which is weird. Uh.
Let me, my workspace is currently, uh. So my local is currently broken. Let me even, let me.
Okay. Or one that.
So, working in one environment without the other, and the data is the same in database, then.
Right.
There is one of two things, it's either, the backend has a hardcoded value, that is different between production and QA. Or the uh, the frontend is looking at a different data source.
Or both could be possible, right?
Yeah, both, both could be possible too.
At the same time, cuz it could be a hardcoded value, and think of that, and then. Still getting, getting it from a different place, but not, but not getting it now in QA. So go reverting to the hardcoded.
What, now I will show you what we are getting in production and what we are getting, give it to me only, let me run my local environment.
Okay.
Uh, since I was working test cases, not that, so my work environment is currently broken, so give me one.
Okay. I'm wondering if that column is null everywhere in production, so in other words, we just don't use that column.
That's what it looks like, so look, I see.
Seems like it, right, that kind of is the only explanation.
Let me uh, confirm that real quick. Um. Uh, some, so the, the main wheel icons.
Yeah.
Those have a um, or no, uh, the, no, we, we use that column elsewhere, it's used um. Icon border color like there.
Yeah, but just because you see the values there doesn't mean we're using it.
Yeah, that, that, that is true as well.
There used to be borders on the main wheel, and we removed them, so perhaps. That's where it's an artifact of. And that's why it's look confusing us here, because we, we don't, in other words, we don't rely, I don't think we rely on that column. And it, and it's really seems strong evidence that we don't, because in production, all of the. Um, colors are there on the map markers, proper, they're properly appearing, except. Well, actually, all of them in production, and all of them in QA except one.
Uh, let me just add it from.
If you were to go to the wheel, Jerry. Um, I go to. Match and, match the map marker color to the color you see on the wheel, I feel like it's the color that goes. In the center of the wheel. But, but then those hex codes didn't match up.
So wait, I'm, I'm on the map and. Okay, I see these food and drink are yellow, and you're saying if I go to face, face be green.
Yeah, but don't they think those map marker colors, they're pretty close to the color inside that wheel, right?
Yeah, uh, let me go and.
But they seem, they look like different hex codes, so using different one.
Are they similar? Well, let me just go to QA.
Okay. Um. Let's see. With the map markers in QA, they look the same. Um.
Jerry, can we start to call, uh, I will tell you, uh, category get children, that query? Category get children, since my system is not responding, I need to restart the laptop.
Um, category get children?
Yes, and then you can pass parent key.
Can you send me the parameters that, that you're doing?
Yeah, yes, I am not able to, see, my laptop is kind of not clicking, I am not able to go there.
Okay, well, why don't you reboot, set, send Jerry whatever you can, why don't you reboot, we'll, we'll continue.
Restart the laptop, I'm joining you in two minutes.
Okay, sounds good, let's, let's continue with updates, I wanna uh.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thanks, alright, um, it, it's now, I wanna uh, get an update from you and see where we're at, we're, I think we're. Very close, it's production build that we keep putting off, but um. Let's see what, I wanna get your thoughts, how'd it go yesterday?
So, uh, finish the logic that I needed to finish for the app review, um. Now. Um, the only thing left is, well, I kind of. Have it where like I hardcoded, oh, let's say I want one, two, three, four to get app review, like if user key matches one, two, three, four. Which works, but uh, Jerry was telling me we can probably make it more configurable by using Firebase. Remote config. Um, which means I guess we can kind of change those parameters. Like we continue to see if we doesn't see it remotely. Uh, instead of them being hardcoded.
Are you, are you strictly talking about just start testing right now?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess, okay.
Yeah, so that, we can like add or remove user keys indicating who can see this review or who can't, so that way. I guess that'll be helpful if we want like maybe those test, you, uh, those QA people we have, like. If we wanna like add, so, allow them access or something like that. Uh, so I guess it'll be helpful in certain scenarios, so I just need to implement it, but it turns out that, the library was not. Uh, installed on our app, I thought, I thought because it was Firebase, it was part of the package, it looks like you have to. You, you have to like install it separately, so, uh, I just work on setting it, setting it up, it's just, um. I've just been trying to get it to work, I keep saying you need this and use that, so, almost there, just need to give it, um. Another try, and then I need to finish basically configuring it and see where I set those parameters up, I've never worked with it before. But after that's done, we can start testing the app review, so I'd say maybe another hour or so.
Okay, and then, um, I had Wells merge, Amin improved his PR, had a merge that code. That was uh, some bug fixes there. Um, what else do we have out scanning, do you have any PRs outstanding, Esther?
Um, other than this one, I, no, they all got, they all got merged, the. Yeah, they all got merged, um. And the only one is the u- update, the, the, the map box. One that he has, which.
Do you need to review that?
Uh, I'm just updated, no, it's a provide, it's a provide, he, he just updated the version, we, did you? Okay, and we, I'm assuming we never got to the bottom of the.
We, we got to a very probable cause, and um, wanted to get your opinion and Amin's opinion. More, more so Amin, because it seems to be related to the wheel, and Amin built the wheel.
Uh, interesting.
Yeah, cuz when, uh, Jerry, when you, right, when you remove the wheel. And um, you remove something else too, like a flash, a flash list replaced with a flat list, it ended up.
I think, yeah, the, the, the flat list, I think was something you talked to Amin over already, but uh. Yeah, there was the flash list, there was the wheel, and then there was a subcategory filter. Uh, I sent a write-up to Amin last night, just kind of describing everything. And, and this mail just came in on this is, when you interact with the map, there's, there's two sections, there's the map, and then there's like the play search. When you interact with those screens, and you go away from them, that memory is freed up. So what happens is over time, you get more and more and more usage anytime you visit those pages.
You said it's freed up?
It is not freed up.
It is not freed up, okay.
So you can.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's kind of where I was thinking, every time you open a map, it's like you opened a new instance of it.
Right.
Or, or something of like of that nature.
Right, and we found out that there was an iOS specific memory leak, the map box view. And Amin updated that document, and that should prevent the memory leak, that's just one of many problems.
Hmm.
Uh, so, if you go in that map view and you comment out the wheel, and you come. If, if you go, if you look at the memory, the app in the normal state, and then you go and you just keep clicking the different pills. Just look up and up and up and up. And you're like, okay, we could have flash list keeping it in memory, comment out the flash list. It's going, it's going up left. Going up, up it up and up it up, or you think, it's not making a GraphQL API call every time it does this.
Correct.
So, what ne- next idea is like, okay, well, let's see where else this can be. This, so there's the wheel, I commented out the wheel, there was even less memory leakage, and then I.
There still was memory leakage.
Yeah, and, and I, well, they're all, and then I commented out the subcategory filter, and then the memory leakage. It, it eventually kind of went negligible, I would say like, a couple of megabytes each re-rendered. But I would, with the last thing you took out? I took out the wheel, and I took out that subcategory filter on the top, on the bottom left.
Subcategory filter, okay, okay.
Yeah, so each of those guys like combined causes a massive memory leak.
Hmm, well, correct, but here's what I'm thinking, um, maybe because it's a heavy component. So therefore, you, you didn't really stop the memory leak, there, you just, there's no data to pile on top of each other. Cuz you just removed everything, so, it, what I'm saying is, if you keep the wheels commented out, and you add back the flash list. Would it still memory leak? And if it does, that means those are not the problem, they're just part of the part, they're part of the app that's getting piled up more.
It's definitely in the flash list too.
Well, you don't get what I'm saying, what I'm saying is. So every time you remove something, the memory leak seems to be less and less, that doesn't mean these are all problems with those, that means these are all. Part of the components that are being cached, or not cached, that are being stacked up. So, think about it this way, like, they weigh, let's put them in weight, let's say they weigh like, you know, five hundred in RAM. But they, every time you stack them up, we're gonna get five hundreds, but if you remove one, now we're getting two hundred incrementals, if you remove one, now we're getting one hundred incrementals. It doesn't mean they're the source of the memory, it just means they're part of the app that's getting stacked.
Hmm, I get what you're saying. Yeah, let's go to.
So what, what would cause it to stack up and not clear out? Uh, yeah, that's what we need to figure out, so, uh, and that's why I say, if you add back the flash list or remove the wheels, if. Still doing that, I'm like, okay, that might be the problem, but if it's still any kind of stacking going on. That means the components themselves are not the problem, they're just, you know, there's a, there's a different problem that's stacking, why are they stacking in the first place?
So, clear order. So we went back to just an old app version, just to see if the issue was still there, and yeah, it was there to an extent, so. Uh, that's just why I was on a very old version of the app, but, let me get my memory. My activity monitor going, and, and this is kind of what we, I, I did pretty much all yesterday, we were. We were going in different areas of the app, we were making sure memory didn't go out of whack, and, and you know, for the most part, like. Chat, chat's fine, uh, like the discover feed, discover feed's fine. User profiles, when there's a lot of images, that, that it can get a bit loaded. Uh, for example, if you go on like Tori's feed, and you go on her photos, and you just keep scrolling and scrolling. It, it doesn't go as crazy as it does on a map, but there is a lot of memory that gets taken up, but that's kind of understandable. And, but then you go on the, you go on the map, and you go on the, uh, the check-in search. One thing I noticed is that, that, the, the memory just never gets freed up, but right now, this now, what I'm doing is I'm getting the app loaded. And I'm gonna do, like you said, we're gonna just comment out the uh, flash list. And I'm sorry, comment out the wheel and leave the flash list, and see what the effect is. It's just, I have to reinstall all my packages cuz I went to a really old version. Almost, it's uh, building out, there we go. Alright, installing, there we go. Alright, so. Let's go to, uh, let me um. Make sure I have the map box installed. Yeah, I need to install map box so we don't uh, reproduce that other memory leak. Let's go to here, we're gonna go to the subcategory list. And we're gonna remove the wheel. Just give it a minute, it's coming along. Alright, so, this is with the new map box version, we'll go to the map. Oh yeah, I need to, um. Now commenting out the wheels, it, it causes a problem with, I think, this wheel state, actually, let me comment out this uh. Where is the wheel, anything to do? Yeah, use wheel data. Um. And, this subcategory dot. Uh, icon. I gotta get rid of these components. I go here, okay, so, oh, oh yeah, I gotta get rid of the, the subcategory filters too. Um. Let's see. Get rid of the map filter, alright. Okay, so we have, uh. Interesting, this is great, oh, that's cuz I, um. Comment it out the wheel, but we're at one point two gigabytes. And as I do this, I mean, we immedi- I immediately just add it. Half a gigabyte of memory. And I could just keep going.
Yeah, so, that kind of tells me that the wheel is not necessarily the problem, it was just, like I said, it was just extra memory that was being added with every. Stack, you can.
Oh, the wheel is still there? Oh, hold on, I added the wheel back, we're gonna get rid of the list now. We're getting rid of the list, so now, a list component, okay? And then let me reload the app to restart my memory, they're all hand in hand, uh, Emmet, what's up?
Jerry, once you can let me know, I'm in, my work is busy, Jerry.
Gotcha, okay, uh, so now we're back in the map, and there's no subcategory list, so it never goes to the list when you toggle to it. But, if I go here, and I start toggling through these guys, there goes the memory. And I'm not making any more network calls.
So, so to Ismail's theory, it's keeping each instance of the map. Well, that's not necessarily the map, but the components like on there, because the map, if you keep the map itself, it doesn't really go up, it looks like. So I think it's not the map, it's these components somehow, some way, so. Y- yeah, we need to look at that, so, what I, what I'm trying to say is that I think it's a specific component that's the problem, so to speak, it's.
Hmm.
It's, yeah, there's something going on, like something's getting stored on the app, everything on that screen is getting stored, is getting stored on memory. We have to see where that is happening.
Uh, we trace it.
Yeah.
So, I wanna show you here, now I have no map, no, uh, okay, I gotta get rid of the filter, subcategory, I gotta get rid of the rule. Get rid of the filters, okay, so we have no wheel, no filters, and we're at. Uh, eight hundred fifty megabytes, let's, let's let it stabilize, and it will start looking, okay, that looks fine. Eight sixty. Nine fourteen, and it's still going on.
Yeah, so that means it's still less that likes, adding to memories, that says less stuff to add to memory.
Alright, there is, right. Yeah, question is why stuff isn't getting disposed after the fact?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what we need to figure out.
How do we figure that out?
Hey, let's look at the code first, um, let me see, I was just, I can help you debug here, I'm just, uh. I'm trying to know that remote config, it keeps giving me problems.
Yeah, I mean, Amin has looked at this code a lot, maybe Amin has some ideas, hey, Amin, are you admin, keeping up on this?
Yeah, I'm on it.
What, what do you think?
I'm with Ismail, and what he was saying, it's not like, I like, uh, specific component, it's more like. All of them, how they are communicate and like, having data there causes this problem, so it's not like a particular. Component, it's like, we need to give that, uh, give this screen another look. And see how the data flows from one. And see how the data flows from one component to other, so we can see. Places that we can optimize and make less data uh moving rounds with that, or we'll be saving on memory.
Okay, is there is there anything that is obvious?
I don't think it's gonna be obvious, it's gonna be like with try and there, like try and and see what I change and like. That's the process that would to.
Okay. I wish that is there, there's no tool that helps you trace back where memory stores? Like where the source of where it's coming from, that that's being stored? Gotta be.
Yeah, there is, there's Xcode instruments, but. It's not, it's the tool that Jerry was using yesterday. It's like, i- it's, it's like do a snapshot of memory graph, but it's not like straightforward, it's like, it's it's. A little close to Jibberish, it's like really hard to understand, like you you need to to be understanding really memory how it works level level. And familiar with that tool a lot, I I didn't work with that tool a lot, I'm not sure if it's mail, it did. But that tool, it's like the like the way to um inspect memory and see where you are having memory leaks.
Okay. Jerry, what's your experience with that code?
Pretty much what we did last night. Using the instrumenter and and trying to see what we have from the memory leaks, like. It it tells you, like, it shows the memory allocations, but it's like, i- i- it's too low level. Like it's been, you know, one megabyte of memory allocation, one megabyte of memory, it it shows it down to the, you know. The page of memory that it tries to take out, and because React Native isn't pure native code. The stack trace ends up so deep that it it overflows the stack and it's just like, I'm not giving you the stack that points to this. That that's what happened yesterday and why I wasn't able to really say where all this stuff was coming from.
I see. So when when you went from a flash list to flat list, um. I know that's not like in Silver Bullet, but was there an improvement? Is that something we should just do just as a uh as a performance boost?
There was a mild improvement. I don't think that's the root cause though.
No, I know it's not, but I was just wondering if, like, I mean, do you think?
There was still a leak, like.
I know.
We're 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 patching a leak here.
Yeah, patches better not than the moment, but I mean, what do you think, is there a really strong? Reason for having a flash list on this list, or what do you think about a flat list?
No, we should be using flash lists, it's like, flat list is just like. The winner list in a basic way, there's no, like, there's no memory improvement or anything. Flash list was made for this, like, bad list, smooth, um like buggy and everything, so.
John, John, you remember, we did switch to flat list and I I was showing you too, it tank, it tanked the frame rate, memory was lower, but tanked the frame rate. Oh wow, it went to five, the frame rate.
Okay, so we'll keep, we'll keep the flash list, so we don't really have any changes yet here um. Without deep dive, it sounds like, so I don't wanna stay on this all day again. But I do wanna get these map markers fixed, the color and the border around that card. I mean, we're doing some investigating. Um, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, at first, it only happens with uh food, um restaurants for the category, now with others. I sent, I made a message, he told me the value, like the color, it was the, because like we we rely on the backend for the color, he told me, I mean, it's deleted from the database.
Well, that that's not necessarily the case, um it that column is null, but um. It's also null in production, but if you go to production, all the color, so that means we're not using that column.
That's that's the sweet, because that's the column that I'm using for um.
Well, that column, that column has values for other categories, so it probably.
Well, the fix, I'm not gonna say the easy fix, but the fix that it's obvious, it's like to not have that column up. To just to the value we're expecting to be there.
Yeah, for sure.
Maybe uh in other, like. The production bill right now, we did some workaround to get over it, and that workaround was not uh solid after the change started to favorites. One more reason to not have that column now, because I did some changes where I'm expecting that column to not be null. Really, so.
So what happens if, you know, so on it, we could, why don't we take the color that you, well, actually, where? Where is that hex code? It's in production, so where is it and can you?
So we are not getting it, let me see on my screen.
But I mean, we are getting it, because I can go to the map and produce.
In the um, yeah, that like um builds, reviews builds. Yeah, but we should be getting it from the backend, because like if we just had holding it.
You think it's hardcoded on the front end?
Yeah, that that's. How it's it's there, like maybe that's the default that like.
Could you, could you take a quick look, and if so, let's let's not obviously not use the hardcoded, and then use, use that hex code and share it with Amin, so he can. Put it backfill it into that, that column.
Yeah, uh.
Well, can you see my screen?
Uh, no. Oh wait, yeah, it's coming through now. Were were you gonna say something, Amina?
Yeah, so I was saying, I'm looking into white, naturally see the color we're using.
Okay.
So here, John, this is left hand side is production response, and right hand side is QA QA response. Or there you see, two transfers are identical, there's no difference.
Yeah. So put out, go ahead, Amina.
Regardless, we should not have been done, like if you change the pen from four to five or another key, you will see like there's a value there, so.
You know, we did that earlier and you're correct.
Yeah, so um we should not be doing that, like, there's no reason, actually, like.
Yeah.
With that, we're just gonna do workarounds in front and.
That makes sense. Okay, so really, we just need to write hex code and then we'll put it in a call.
Yeah.
Okay. Will it also, I guess it's the same color that goes around the border of the uh card?
Yeah, 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 it is.
Okay. I wonder where that orange is coming from?
It's like the di- um, maybe it's the default color, like if there's no color, just do orange, maybe.
Maybe because it's black on the other borders, that's really.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let's see what happens, maybe it'll work perfectly, or maybe there's more to this.
Yep, hope, then give me the list updated update.
Yep, standby for that. And then Ismail, we um. We didn't, I don't think we finished with our plan for today, so what what's um? What's left outstanding and?
Yeah.
How do we get to our production build?
Um, so this remote config thing is. It's not playing nicely, it's um. It needs other packages in our app, um.
This is just for us to test the review thing?
Yeah, well, if you want it to be dynamic, so this this is just a way to get it to work, but Jerry, what like or, I don't know, I mean, if you have to work with. React Native Firebase Remote Config?
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm. Yeah, just when I'm trying to install, it keeps giving me errors. Um, I know it depends on. Uh, React Native Firebase app, it also depends on React Native Firebase, I think, analytics. So which we, which, so you have to like have them, but I think it also has, maybe they have to like certain verges to play with each other, and I don't know, it's a good idea to have them all up to date.
If if there's a lot of packages that need to be installed, I can create an API endpoint for this. It's just, it won't be configurable on the fly without a backend update.
Correct. Um, yeah, so there's that, or or we just have them hardcoded for testing. So, but yeah, the other one, like, I don't want to spend too much time on it, but it keeps like, keeps throwing the errors, and then after I install them, it it like.
There you have them, like, it's a build error or like?
Yeah, when I try to build the app, like I uninstall it and then reinstall it, and then it keeps throwing errors. Um, so I think I'm like, let me see, something, someone says Xcode exit error sixty-five. It will say no visible interface, F I R remote config. Clears a selector, set custom signals, yada yada. Uh, so it's like a problem with the package when you're doing, when it's doing, when installing the package.
You want me to look into that, do you?
Um, you you can, so what I'm saying is, would it, do you guys think it's it's worth the time to have it like set up, or are we gonna like maybe use it later?
I I don't know, I want, I wanna move faster on this. Um, you had other solutions, like. Um, where we could use a feature flag potentially, or uh?
Yeah, we can use a feature flag. This just, this remote config will just be kind of the, yeah, something that you can like edit on the fly, but I guess the backend can do the same. It'll just, it just would have been a way to do it using Firebase, I guess.
Yeah, but Firebase is never easy. And um.
Yeah, so we we like, we can either have it hardcoded or or I can have it um.
When you hard coded, I hope you hard coded. If it's hardcoded, is that just specific users?
Yeah, that's just like you add an array of users and you can't add more, but if it's backend, you can add or remove people.
Yeah, let's do that, easy, and then we're off to the races.
Backend?
Uh, yeah, wherever it would be hardcoded.
Oh, hardcoded? I can do hardcoded, hardcoded, we're we're done, I can create a builder now, but if it, if we're gonna have it back, but the only problem with hardcoded, I guess maybe is uh. We'll have the user's keys exposed.
How so?
Because they're hardcoded in the front end.
That those are, user keys exposed don't mean anything, like.
It doesn't matter, it's it's not anything crazy, because right?
Especially with the new authentication that we're gonna be having, like, that doesn't matter, like, if you know the user key, that won't entirely anything we got.
You heard it. We still don't have it, though, enabled.
Because we don't have it enabled, but you know, we have, we're having, we have the framework in there, we just have it on.
Yeah, which we don't know when we're gonna do that, so that's why I'm saying.
No, no, I wouldn't worry about it, because think about it, all the backend calls to return user keys, how do you think the the deep routing?
True.
Yeah, so.
I guess so. Yeah, okay, well, then I would need a list of the users. That are gonna be testing app review of their user keys. Well, I guess users, it are, yeah, John, if you can send me the users, and then maybe me and Jerry can figure out the user keys for those people.
I sent Danny a list a while back, Danny, you still got that list? I think you were excluding from amplitude reports or something, or well.
Jerry, which Jerry, which list is it? Sorry, I was uh, I was writing.
There's a list of our internal users and their user keys.
Yes, I have a list of those in amplitude, there's a a cohort called Circle's Internal Team.
Okay, can you or well send that to Ismail, please?
With the user keys?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I'll add those users in there, um and the way I have it set up right now is, after, if you have three or more signature. Uh moves or actions that you took, um. Uh, it will show this app review only once, and if you want to see it again, you have to uninstall the app review and reinstall it. And I did that so we don't automatically trigger it three times and use up all our tries while we're debugging. Um. And I would recommend when testing this, we do it not all at once, so we don't use up all our tries, we do it one person at a time.
So is it, it is still um after the third signature action, right?
Yes.
Now, what if I'm, like, it's an existing user already have those actions?
No, it would start from scratch.
It will start from scratch no matter what.
Yeah, because it's, it's a local storage on the. On a device, so even if the user sees it and they uninstall the app and reinstall it, they will see it again.
Perfect.
So. Yeah.
Okay, great, so let's let's ship it with that and then. Um, what what else is there outstanding? I know um, Amina was working on a couple bug fixes. Do you have any review, uh PRs for review, Amina?
Um, no, it's um, it's um, yeah, the uh the upgrade uh for the Mapbox version.
Yeah, I reviewed it, I almost.
Yeah, that's approved. And it was only the other one, it's like uh, I was looking into the color thingy. Yeah, uh but there's like another PR that uh, it's going for me today. Is the, it's on my house, like you, as you drive in the map, still it keeps moving and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's there's that, but the PR is not ready, but I have some unfinished work regarding the streamlined flow for uh invited businesses.
Right, um. I suppose if we shift it with that flow, it doesn't really affect or interfere.
Get out.
Users, right, because it would have, it'd have to come through a deep link, right?
True.
So we we don't have to worry about if it's fully perfectly functioning, or maybe it's slightly broken, it won't really matter.
Yeah.
If we don't, okay, cool. Um, how much time do you need to finish the driving, the map updating while driving?
Um, I would say like a couple two hours, uh because I still need to look into and see. Because I know we need to keep watching for your position for some reason. But we don't want that, because as you move, that changes the state, which causes the map to re-render with the new state.
Yeah, we can, we can do it when you change a filter, you know, or change the category.
Yeah, that's 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 what we're doing, it's just like right now, it's um, we don't want it to be happening when, like, you're moving. It's only when a user presses some buttons, it's not.
Like initially. Um, to grab the location, but then. Yeah, why, it doesn't need to keep looking after that initial one, right?
True, maybe we did it for, for some reason, I don't remember now, but it's there, like, we keep watching users' location.
I I think that was a mistake, do you know who put that in?
Um, let me see, um.
Was it a lot? Was it Marco?
Um, give me a second. I I don't have um, because it says here nine months ago, this is when we did demonstration.
Before.
Yeah, I have to look into the other uh report to see.
That's okay. If it was Marco, he wasn't that experienced with all that stuff, and it probably sounded like a good idea at the time for him. But he worked on the map.
Mm-hmm. Um.
Sorry, I can interrupt you, but there's a button that um, it says update the map search area, and he worked on that. And I have a feeling that's when it got introduced. Probably not necessary at all.
So yeah, I'll I'll comment that code where we um, um, watch the position. Make later in the road, we might remember why for some case. But I'm I'm gonna move it, uh it's gonna be there.
And um if it, if you remove it and everything works okay, then then it's done, right?
Uh, yeah, it's it's gone by, uh along the road, we remembered, oh, why, this is why we needed it, we can we can bring it back, it's it's still hidden here.
Okay. So then, so you don't really need a couple hours for this?
Oh yeah, if it's that's the case, no, it's just like um, like a max, like fourteen minutes.
Okay, let's um, let's do that and then have Ismail review that, merge it, and then I think that's everything unless Wells has something, let me ask, let me ask Wells. Uh, do you have a bug fix, Wells, that's outstanding still?
Uh, sorry, if I have a book fix for what?
Do you have any PRs that have any like critical defects that are still needing review?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so, um. Yeah, you are you working on some more, just like more cosmetic related stuff?
Uh, no, I'm working on the CEO on the entertainment search screen.
Right, right, okay. Cool, um, so we can live without that, because we already have been for a long time. Great, uh, yeah, because I wanna get um. Production build, because we still, you know, we have your, the fix you did well, where. You um, we got the notifications to work, um remember the SMS authorization was like interfering with the. You um we got the notifications to work, um remember the SMS authorization was like interfering with the. We saw a lot of users not getting notifications. That fix hasn't been merged, I mean, it's been merged, but we haven't, you know, there's a lot of fixes like that. That um I wanna get into the app store. So, yeah.
So perhaps that that wasn't the main fix.
What wasn't the main fix?
Perhaps that's that that SMS thing with one signal wasn't really the true root of the issue, is Gary listening to this?
No, I I we don't, I I think it is, we haven't pushed it to um production yet.
Oh, I see, I see, okay, so I would, I thought I thought it wasn't. I thought it it was deployed already, but we are are still seeing issues.
No, no, um.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's just waiting on deployment among among a bunch of other things, so then Ismail um. Once Amin's done turning off that one thing for the map. Um I I'd like to disable the uh custom topics for now. And then do the production build that we can test with.
Okay, and there's that one that you sent me in the morning, is that super important, the ones with the? With the um or you sent it to me later, I guess yesterday, late at night, um with the message.
Um yeah, it would it would be nice, um yeah, to have the skip button not skip the whole flow, but just skip that screen.
Hmm, okay, um okay, and you want it to only show they come through subscription, you're saying?
No, um opposite, I want it to be. It's like it it's basically this this situation that we already experienced with, I saw a session replay with the beta tester. It it happened during onboarding. Actually, I I shouldn't have said opposite, the subscription, yes, I was thinking notification, so yes, with a subscription. Because it happened onboarding when the two users followed each other in onboarding. And then became friends, and by the time they finished onboarding, it initiated it and then killed it, remember? But we were just continuing.
Yeah, but the way I have it right now is instead of skipping, like you know how right now automatically skips if certain conditions are met? It's like they're already friends, if they can't follow. So right now, how I have it instead of skipping, it just shows that chat, you don't wanna keep it like that?
It shows that it shows the initial friend connect, right?
It shows the chat.
The input window?
Yeah.
Where it's a friend connect.
Yeah, so there will be no skipping is what I'm saying.
Right, when I use the term skip, I mean the skip button.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, that one I'll I'll fix, I changed the behavior. But you also were saying that you want this chat drawer to show up. Only if they come through the app the app automatically, to start automatically.
Yeah, anytime it's it was gonna start automatically, we let it continue to this new flow.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is so if it comes, if it comes through notification, it won't show?
Yes, it will.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just understood that.
I would like it there too.
Okay, okay, then yeah, I'll just I'm then I just have to change that skip functionality.
Okay. With that skip functionality, it still showed that dog animation for a half second, right?
Before or after you click skip?
Not even talking about skip button, I'm talking about the bypass. The you you had it bypassing if two people were friends.
Correct.
That bypass still.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it it would show the dog, now we won't do that, but there's no more bypassing, but we'll take it to chat. To they'll take you to friend connected to chat.
Right, so it'll show the dog lottie animation and then to that.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what that's exactly what I want.
Okay, cool, and that's already there, um implemented, and I also added um. Animation when it goes up and down, I don't know if you noticed that, and it's not scrollable anymore, or you can't add a drawer.
I think I saw that, yeah, wait, did you did you do a build yesterday?
No, no, this is OTA.
Oh, okay, okay.
This was like two days ago, I made those changes.
Yeah, so then yeah.
And I, yeah. So you should you just yeah, I think it looks. Fine now with all those changes, like the animation looks nice, it's not, doesn't pop in your face, and it doesn't scroll down, so. You can test that now, see if you like it, um.
Yeah.
So that's all good, I just need to change that skip behavior and um. You did well, so I mean, have any any PRs that we still want?
Um no, um just one from Amin that will be shortly.
Shortly, okay.
Yeah, and then Jerry, if we're gonna do a production build, do we have to deploy some backend stuff now?
Yeah, I can um I can get that lined up, I don't think we made any major changes lately in the backend, anything, it was just new stuff.
Okay.
So, yeah, I can I can roll that out.
Okay, double check on that, uh Amin, I got one more question, I I just wanna confirm. You did make the change for the first favorite flow now, it it's no longer. Related to any kind of delay, it's the third home visit, is that right?
The home press button.
Yeah, okay, and and it the trigger there or also a notification will trigger it? We have a notification.
Yeah, yeah, there is, yeah.
Okay, so that that hasn't changed, right?
Yep, that hasn't changed.
Okay, good, um. Okay. I'm trying to think if there's anything else, um. I mean, is it possible when a new topic is made and we get those spotlight bodies? Is it possible for a user to tap before this the lottie plays to tap in the input field? And get the keyboard up in the way, cause I did it once.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing to. Yeah.
Um we probably should have a guardrail there, I don't know that how critical that is, like I think most new users aren't gonna move that fast. So, so I'll I'll just I'll just keep that in in my notes and we'll add a trail to get on that one, okay, um. Okay, so let's uh let's move forward then on our build, I mean, let's uh Ismail know when you're ready for him to review that PR.
Okay, also, um I sent I made the hex color for the um color for the restaurant in blue color. Once it's updated in the database, uh you uh you should be seeing in the app like.
Yep, um let me know when I can test that out, okay? Amin sent it already.
I did.
Oh, my the board, my Slack is uh uh closed, let me open it this way.
Okay, yeah, so like uh when you get that in, I'll test it right away.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so Jerry, uh. I sent a message to you like something I wanna look into, why why those two particular users did not? See um the first favorite flow, that's confusing to me.
Okay, yeah, first favorite flow. Uh maybe maybe ask Amin on that with the session replays, cause uh. Yeah, I don't know why they would not have gotten the first favorite clue.
Okay, and what about a friend connect?
Okay, so I looked into that. It was all timing, um. What are my notes here? Okay. Rodney was going to get a friend connect for Laura. But Rodney added Laura to his SOT in onboarding, which canceled out the friend connect.
Okay, repeat that one more time, so.
Ro- Rodney was going to get a friend connect for Laura.
Yeah.
Um but he added her in his SOT during onboarding.
Yeah.
But that canceled out the friend connect.
But. That's still, maybe I just didn't see it on session replay, that is still usually like it would show the uh. Dog animation for a half second and then navigate him, cause like it still triggered the friend connect, but then it would bypass. And it would still navigate him to Laura's profile, and I don't remember seeing that. And this exactly the.
He didn't get the dog because it was it was canceled, like it never played. Like the dog never played because it was canceled.
But that's what sparked this whole new flow is that two other users, uh they were beta testers. Followed each other in onboarding, and then the invitor was forced navigated. To the invitees profile, because that friend connect triggered for a half second, like you saw the dog, but then like. It bypassed it, cause they're friends and still, and that's the whole thing like uh.
Ah, I wonder. I see, so it has that, it might have that, the the query might have fetched it before they uh they were friends, I see.
Yeah.
Um but it sent it sent him to her pro- it sent Rodney to Laura's profile.
Well, no, and it's this is two other beta testers I saw. But no, I don't recall seeing that with Rodney, but then again, I was watching it through the stream on your end. Um let me just take another closer look at that. Cause I want I want them to go through this flow that Ismail just worked on all all week and um.
What flow is this?
Um let me send you a screenshot, actually, I'll just show my screen. So this one here, um. Isn't new, so uh I'll go back. But it basically triggers when I'm gonna tap on the new friend, third one from the top. Why they're not working? This one, okay, sorry, this one, okay, so it's this. And then, you know, you can message from here.
Is this a special deep link?
Nope.
Or is this?
No, it's just this is the case where you're already friends. So if I skip it, it'll navigate, it's supposed to navigate me there to the friends.
Hmm, so.
Why does that not navigate me, and why is this not triggering it?
Yeah, I need to know a deep link this is because I'm canceling out any action queue. For like friendship when you become friends. Have, we didn't have this look.
Yeah.
We had just the dog skipping over, so that's why I skipped over it. Back, I need to add it back.
Gotcha, okay, I'm glad we're talking about it, when did you remove it? Um.
This was, this was a while back, just um when we were first implementing it. And you know, it was just a question of, well, when somebody becomes friends, can we just not play? That screen, because it was just navigating them to their profile. It was like without context. Yeah, when they become friends, I can cancel out the action queue to re- not redirect them. And that's when it was implemented, but now since we're actually doing something, I gotta put it back.
Gotcha, um so do you have a question about which query it was?
Yeah, yeah, Ismail, if you could send me the deep link, if this is a special deep link, or if this is just that the ad suggest, or not the ad suggested, the um. The add friend screen.
Hmm, which one is that, sorry?
Whatever John's uh displaying.
Okay.
It's um when you're already friends.
Okay.
So in this case, I'm already friends with Danny seven six one.
Okay.
Yeah, Jerry said he's turned off the navigation from the backend.
Oh, yeah, he did, as a subscription, like where where force navigates you. That was our requirement, cause we didn't want it to be skipped, cause it it in the past, it would skip you on the screen.
Okay, so wh- when will it navigate me here?
If you click on a notification or alerts.
Um, okay, but I wanted it to.
Also happen automatically?
Yeah, after onboarding.
Well, after onboarding, I think already it does happen automatically, because you expressed what started all this.
That's right, that's what I was saying, but then we looked at another user's uh session replay yesterday. And it did not, but I would like to confirm that, Jerry, just watch Rodney's one more time and confirm that it didn't. Attempt to do this, like it wouldn't do this, but it would attempt with the dog, you know, lottie?
Yeah, well, here here's what I see, so um like if we're catching, we're we're not fetching an action queue. After onboarding. Cause I remember I tested that with the place redirect to bring me to tech to you. That didn't work, so it never fetched during onboarding. So now, uh just a minute, for a second. Okay, okay, sorry, just background noise, uh so we don't, so this this goes hand in hand with the feature that we had to bring a break to tech to you. After they onboarded, and whenever I tested this, whenever I onboarded, I had the action queue lined up. To send me to tech to you, it never triggered because it was never queried. So Ismail made an update, that should be part of the latest build, that would cause a fetch and redirect after onboarding. Um so that wouldn't be in the current production build, so what that means. Is when Rodney followed Laura during his onboarding session. Even though he was supposed to get a friend connect for Laura, because he followed her during onboarding. That canceled out the queue notification, so when Rodney came back in the app. Even like after his onboarding, when he reopened and started a new session, it was never fetched because it was marked canceled. By that time. So effectively, Ismail's fix with um the tech to you case. That would all that in combination with not deleting or not canceling out the friend connects. Um that should fix this scenario.
Okay, I got a little lost on it on that, um.
The the short the short answer is is if you remember the tech to you redirect after onboarding.
Yeah.
Thing we're working with it, Ian, you combine that and you combine me. Removing out the cancellation of the friend connect after you become friends. Rodney would get the screen for Laura.
Okay, it cur- currently.
Okay, current, okay, currently in production, Rodney would have never gotten that, he did not get the dog animation.
Okay, so what do we need to do to get this flow to go through?
Exactly what I said before, just un-cancel, like don't cancel out the friend connect after they become friends. And then the other fetch during onboarding will work its magic, it's it's two birds or one stone here.
Okay, okay, what does this mean now, anytime two people become friends, they'll always go through this?
Um by that logic, yes, that can be modified.
Time they get a notification.
Well, yeah, well, they go to notification and they open the app.
No, no, what 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 I'm saying is right now, we have it where if you get the notification, it and if it's gonna skip. Uh so what I'm trying to say, John, is if if Jerry removes the filter, or if they're already friends. Then every time you see that notification, if you're in the app, it will force navigate you to the screen.
For every friendship.
But you whenever that notification triggers.
Right, right.
And I I will say for popular users, like if let's say. Zane is inviting a bunch of people, well, no, he wouldn't be friends with.
They're not always friends, yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't always be friends, but if somebody goes through a lot of friends getting at it, they'll get a lot of redirects.
Yeah, I see that, um. Okay, so the the original thing that kicked us off, I saw the two beta testers go, they follow each other in onboarding. And it immediately after. Um onboarding. Force navigated into, it was gonna be the friend connect, but of course, they're already friends, so then it ended up just taking the user. To that person's profile, uh to their invitee's profile. It is that still, so that'll be the case, right, like after it'll be after onboarding, right? They'll be they'll be drawn to this?
Yes, after onboarding, they'll be drawn to it, and we're also gonna be doing a fresh fetch, so it's gonna come from the query. Rather than the subscription.
Okay, now there's some challenges, because if there's an invited, so let's say. I invited Danny seven six one three, I'm his inviter. Well. Other way around, he invited me. There's two things that are supposed to happen right after onboarding, either this or start the convo. In fact, I saw with the beta testers, start the convo began. Got interrupted by this. So how do we? Prioritize those?
That's for Ismail, the answer.
Can you repeat that?
So in the beta tester case. The start, start the convo triggered because. There was an inviter, so the invitee. Began start the convo, but then because there was like a partial friend connect. This, this took, this took over. That invitee to the friend's profile.
Yeah, well, start the convo is not one of the excluded screens or flows.
Right, okay. That's okay.
I guess it's happening the same thing, huh? No, what I'm saying is that they're both starting a convo, but it could be different users.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, like, I think. This would be better because they can suggest friends, this is where we really need people. Um, bringing friends together. This is more more valuable in this case.
Yeah, and the thing is after they're done, they will go back to start the convo, it's not like it's it skipped.
But what happened is start the convo started.
Oh, wait, wait a second, they'll go back, they'll go to their u- to that user's profile after, but if they click. Back, they might actually, they might, I I I don't know necessarily.
I think they end up, well, what happened is I saw, I saw start the convo first. But then it got.
Yeah, you'll see that first.
But then it got interrupted, which we don't want.
Correct, which gets interrupted, and then at the end. It either goes back to start the power or the user profile, if the user clicks back, it will go back to start the combo, I believe.
Interesting. Okay, I wanna I wanna revisit that in a second. Um, but also this, if if I finish this, this should take me to Danny seven six one three's profile.
Actually, let me see something, so if I finish, if I finish the 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 onboarding um. Before here, and this is from. And so if I click not now. It will for sure take them back to the star combo. But if they go all the way through with the front connect, uh. If you go through the flow and if the combo was up there and they see that nice job, then they'll be taken to that users profile.
Could you show me?
But it, but but if they click not now. No, it's just like I'm thinking how we.
Basically, go through onboarding and.
I have to have a friend connect. And I have to have the star combo also, I mean, it'll have to have an invite.
Okay, so we can give you an inviter, Jerry gives you an inviter, then you.
No, I need a friend connect.
The inviter will follow you. And then when you onboard, you'll automatically follow. The inviter and it'll do it.
Well, it's not the inviter now, also for a returning user, it's gonna be their most recent friend. That's gonna be their quote unquote inviter. So if you have friends, Ismail, that will be your default inviter.
Tap on the friends, number six right there. Up at the top, oh, yeah, and then. Go ahead and unfollow. Like uh, let's say Danny. Danny and Oscar Meyer. Okay, and then when you go through onboarding, you can follow them. And it should, it should work.
Oh, wait, what what should work, hold on, wait, so if Ismail follows Danny during onboarding, you're saying it will get him a credit connect? I mean, I'll start the convo with him? The logic that would be is whoever is his most recent friend. When we take the snapshot, the snapshot is taken. Whenever you, after you verify your phone number, so we don't know anything that you do in onboarding after you verify your phone number. Because all the information about. Your inviter and all that, that that's fetched after you verify your phone number when you call register using.
Okay, but you verify your phone number like almost, it's like one of the first steps.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying that your inviter won't change when you verify your phone number, so like, if you're saying following Danny.
Yeah, it has to be before I even onboard, it has to be so.
No, because that happened with the beta testers.
Now we're talking about the start the convo, like, so start the convo depends on inviter, inviter set. Before onboarding.
Doesn't Dan, uh doesn't start the convo, Jerry also start with the most recent friendship?
Wait, only when you verify your phone number. So it's whoever, whenever Ismail verifies his phone number, his inviter. Or whoever he starts the convo with after onboarding. It's determined by his most recent friendship at the time. Of him verifying his phone number, so if he goes and proceeds to the onboarding and like follows Danny, that won't count.
Okay, well, there may be a different person in there.
There'll be somebody, he has four friends, it'll be somebody for his inviter, but now if.
I remember we cleared it once.
Are you able to record your screen?
Uh, me, I can open my screen as.
QA, and let me clear out all of the uh break nets.
I'm okay, make, I wanna make sure. I guess, yeah, that won't affect this, right?
Yeah, well, in QA, I'm gonna clear out the friend connects, I'm gonna clear out the action queues. Is Danny needs to unfollow and re-follow Ismail.
Before I, before I onboard.
Or you verify your phone number. Or just somebody who is not a friend of Ismail right now. Needs to follow him in QA. That should tee up the, well, okay, let's let's see. Yeah, it would be a friend connect, yeah, so. Uh, maybe.
Well, you're always be friends with people. It's, I think it's been, let's just go through it, see what happens, we'll always do it again.
I am, Ismail test is following. So I can't. Oh, that's the um, that's like the app check, I think.
It doesn't pop up on real devices, just fine.
Are you recording? See the yellow icons on the map markers now?
So I just follow them both?
So can I update in the production also?
Oh, yeah, you might as well, it's not broken there, but yeah, go ahead, well, yeah, go ahead. I'll test it there when you're, when it's deployed.
Alright, yeah, there's no friend connect.
Correct, because nobody followed Ismail, right?
So how would, how do we trigger it?
Go back, so Ismail needs to get out the app. And then he needs to unfollow, unfollow, you can unfollow me, I can follow you if you want.
I'm not following you.
Yes, and. Me, I'm probably, yeah, I'm at the bottom of your screen, middle, okay, unfollow me. Why does it just?
That's not right.
That's not right.
And we did fix it. Damn it.
Your own followers right now, so following. Uh, not on here.
This would work, but it's just.
Yeah, okay, so get out the app.
Is that something Will's worked on? I wanna have a look at that while we're doing this.
I don't know, I forget. Will's, do you work on this button?
Oh, Will's isn't here. Let me bring him back.
Stop this recording.
And then Jerry, when are you supposed to follow him?
Wait, oh, wait, whoa, whoa, yeah, stay, stay right there, Ismail. Stay right there.
I'm gonna run out of login attempts.
Well, no, he's using a test number, so. Okay, so let me make sure that I'm following this. Are you on Ismail test or invite?
Yes, test, Ismail test.
Ismail test, okay, so. Why does it have? I'm following, why does it sound like I'm following Ismail test?
There couldn't be two.
Yeah, you weren't following.
Oh, yeah, Ismail test with the cat. Yeah, there's another Ismail test, they're all connected.
You weren't, you weren't following them because it wasn't under the friends pill.
Let me make sure I'm following. We look at Ismail test with the cat.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, and then Will's. Well, I think we we have a problem with the uh following button, if you go to. Your followers and then go to the following pill. And you tap on.
Followers and then following pill?
Yeah, and then if you tap on one of those following. Buttons, it's uh. Been changed, it should say follow, but it's still state said following, even though it did update on the backend.
Okay, I'm following. I'm following Ismail test, let me check something. Let's see.
The following button didn't update, go ahead and unfollow someone from there. And tell me if it updates for you.
Let me, let me send you a screenshot for it.
Did I go through this, Jerry? Um, just making sure I have everything right, that I followed the right account.
Yeah, it's working, it's working for me as well, it didn't work just now for Ismail.
Okay, uh, give it a go, Ismail, sorry.
Okay, so you're here, so I follow you back, right?
Um, it won't matter. Everything looks good on it. Very nice.
I'm dropping off for now, uh, ping me if you require anything.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it did work, see, it's just. We learned, I started here because I followed him back. We recreated it.
I wasn't looking, did you see a start the convo in the?
In the dog right away.
Okay, yep, uh, okay, so then let's see what happens if you go through.
The boundaries page. This will start this.
Yeah, and I'll say, let's say uh. Say hi. So navigate you to.
Now we kind of relapsed trace.
It's what we want, right? We don't want it to do start the convo there. Okay, if that was after a message sent, what would happen if you did send a message and went back?
Well, I'd have to redo everything.
Right, yeah, but it's it's, I'd rather do it now and figure out if there's a defect or not.
Yeah, I understand that, so, I unfollow them, you can unfollow me, Jerry?
Okay, so. Unfollow Ismail test. And what are, what are we doing now?
So I guess she's gonna follow me, um, now, you can follow me now, right? And I'll follow you back and we'll.
I think I need to reset your key now. Okay, um, let me, wait, let me follow you.
Okay. Go down, see what happens when I finish onboarding. See, notice how you won't, you know, subtract the combo or anything else, also it'll show the dog right away. Uh, the same thing would happen with a profile, if you have a profile, it'll navigate to the profile right away, so. There it goes. And here we go, so here's the C in circles, and then you'll see the dot right away.
Oh, yeah, I saw start the convo behind it, but like no one.
Yeah, it's just like super instant, so let's do skip. Let's do um. Uh, so if they click on now, we'll take them back to start the convo. But if they do it through here, they do next job. I'll come to the user, we'll probably reopen that and then they'll get this maybe, please click maybe later. So they can never go back. There was?
Well, the back button was there before. So that was really about to start the convo. Because you hadn't seen it yet.
Yeah, but the other one gets queued. We'll keep it for now, but I'm gonna show you one, so we're gonna need to do one more test, Jerry. And just, oh, I forgot to unfollow you.
I could just, oh wait, we trigger it.
Wait, wait, I have it, I have it, I have it on my other phone, I think. My physical phone, oh, yeah, I do. Okay. Friend. Jerry. Follow. Okay, I followed you. Hey, my name's John, sorry, I'm messaging him. No. Okay, so let's clear the query, or let's, you can clear my query. Or friend connect, and you can follow me again.
Okay, um. So clear it out. And then I'll follow you. Okay, go, go for it.
It's all as okay, huh? Okay. Okay, so. It's like, oh, it did trigger it, Jared.
Wait, did?
It did not. So the friend connect, if you're gonna clear anything or?
Uh, it says you. It was dismissed, it, um. Wh- what are we testing? So I'm trying to figure it out, because I see it was. Queued. Um. I don't know, where, where, where am I going for this?
Uh, uh, but also I think to us, John, is that. We, this is Danny, and the other friend connected was gonna, or the other start the combo was gonna be. Jerry.
Yeah.
So there's different start combos.
Right.
Uh. So here's what's gonna happen. I'm, I'm, I, I already know what's gonna happen, so let's say I click back instantly, I don't wait for that to pop up. I'm gonna see Danny's for like a second, and then I'm gonna see. An overlay of Jerry's on top.
No, you wouldn't see Jerry's, Jerry's was triggered because you were on his profile.
Correct, but, so. It will be true, because it will navigate me to his profile, remember?
Yeah, you might see it on his profile, but then you wouldn't.
No, 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 it asked you, look. So this is, I'm gonna go to Jerry's profile, right? Real quick, I'm gonna go back.
Yeah.
Yeah, wait a second.
Yeah, no, it's, this is, this is normal, it will, you can't.
No, it, it did show, it did show outside the profile, I'm positive. Uh.
Like, if you left, if you leave it there.
And I go back. Yeah, I know. But, but, but what happened was, if I, like, I remember I navigated. And it should know. Am I not crazy? There you go, snap. Well, I guess I have to stay here longer or something. Oh, they didn't even trigger it, I guess, oh, it's not triggering it to be, you know, it's.
Right, because it's, like, it already. The subscription's that over, you know, like it tr- it was going to, and then. You buy, you got, you bypassed it.
Oh, I mean, if that's the case, then.
You can unfollow and follow, yeah, I, I think it'll work out okay, because it will only come up. On the screen up in three.
If you are on the profile, okay, if that's the case, then yeah, I thought it, it might come up later, like it gets queued or something.
No.
Oh, is that, oh, if that's the case, then we shouldn't have a problem.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I, I think it's good at this point. So. So now. Um. And, and is it now any time two people become? Friends, like, what, what, what's another scenario where you might see that one?
Well, i- i- if this, if this is the only scenario, you, if this is the scenario you want to trigger, then we'd, no further action needed. Now, if, if you want the friend connect to be triggered every time that notification pops up, which might be a little excessive. Like, force navigation. No, no, no. No, no, I'm talking about force navigating.
I see.
Like, the pop-up. So that's, that's why the filter, we added that filter, so it doesn't like, if you get like fifteen of those days, you don't get redirected fifteen times if you're in the app.
Yeah, let's keep it like that, that's good.
So if, if, yeah, so if, if this, if you're happy with this, then no further change needed on front or back end, we're good to go.
Okay. Okay, great. And there was a fourth scenario, and I'm trying, uh, there's one one for your contact joint.
Mm-hmm.
How does that one play in?
Well, well, here, the same way as this one, in terms of if. It gets queued up.
Because it might be queued for the other.
On, onboarding.
Yeah. Like the other person who, the invitor. Right, because they're the ones who get, the notification says your contact joint circles. So they would, they would go through the same flow too, right?
Uh, yeah, so if, if they follow each other, they would go through this flow. If they don't follow him, he would see the, the regular friend connect.
Oh, got it. Okay, so this should work, this should work great, okay, Amin said he, uh, had the PR ready for you now, for the. Map thing.
Yeah, okay.
That should be the last of that.
Uh, yeah, I, I'll also spend some time on that, on that. Memory leak too. If I can probably, uh, and take a look at it as well, uh. With Jerry, I mean.
Okay.
Want to spend time on that?
Uh, yeah, I think we should, uh, we've made progress, um, but I think we should get this production build. Right now. And then we'll submit it to Apple right away, because we don't have to release it, we can just submit it and then hold, hold off if we want.
Hmm, okay, so I mean, the app, he has the watch. Position, he removed that. And he removed the subscription, okay, so he moved the, the app, the, basically the watch position, which is the geolocation, he removed. The, um. App state. Track, which is that, or not, to update the map, so those won't update the map anymore, and that's what we wanted, right?
Right, exactly.
Okay, so, uh, it's good done. Um, approved.
Okay, do you want him to merge it, or?
Uh, I can merge it, if it's.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll just load him now that I merged it. Okay, uh, or here, I think he's online. Uh, good, too good. Is he, did he want to break his fast, or is he still online?
He said give him the twenty minutes, and I was like fifteen minutes ago.
Okay, uh, I don't know, I can, I can, if you want to start right now, I can, I can merge it, I'll, I'll, I'll merge it.
Cool, yeah, I wanna, I wanna start to build.
Uh, not being said, he does have to review my PR.
Which one's, which one are you?
The app review.
That one, right? Which we don't need that necessarily, oh, and, uh, and you're gonna disable custom topics for now.
Uh, yeah, I had those changes inside app review PR, because I thought we were gonna have it in.
Uh, what changes?
The skip and the disabling the custom.
I see.
Uh, it, it, well, it, it shouldn't be too bad, let me see.
Well, if it's only our internal users, then it's fine, right?
Yeah, 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 no, it's only gonna be our, the list that Danny gave me, so it's gonna be our internal, internal users, when I say two, but I mean like, as far as app review goes, oh. There's like, there's some conflicts, so. Well, I guess it's. Uh. Oh, it's because I added other, other stuff to it, is why, like, for example, those, who going, the maybe. Uh. You know how you have like maybe, or not going, we, we're tracking him now?
Yep.
So that's stuff like that, like I added those and.
That's good, that's all in that same PR?
But it's in the same PR, so that's why.
Okay, so we just need, uh, Amin to review it.
Yeah, and it looks like there's conflicts, so I'm, I gotta go. Uh. Of conflicts.
In, in yours?
Yeah, with development, so let me just go ahead and get development, I'll, I'll fix it right now, let me go back to my PR and merge them together. Make sure it develops now, uh, at, uh, it's, uh, there's a conflict here. Uh, it's because I guess he added a. Except. Yeah. Well, this should fix it. Yeah, so there's conflict, uh.
Okay.
Uh. Yeah. Alright, we should get that out.
Cool. And you say you need yours, you need yours reviewed.
Or did you? Mine reviewed, no, I didn't, or I can, I can build it off of mine, but it's better for him to review it. Uh.
Yeah, did you already merge it or no?
Actually. Uh, uh, so, no, he, so what I'm saying is, uh. I can create the build off of like branch, but if, since this is gonna be a production mode, I, it would be better if I need to review it, so. He will just need to, I fixed all the quote conflicts, so now it's ready to be merged if it is approved. Uh, but I mean, just have to take a look at it, it's. It's kind of, it's kind of big, but it's not very complex.
Okay, but it'll be, it'll be in this build.
Yeah, so let me send this PR to Amin.
Okay.
Yeah. So I sent, um, the PR, he just has to review it, after he approves it, then I'll create the build.
Okay.
Uh, in the meantime, I'll start looking into that memory leak thing. Maybe I, uh, can, I will. But it looks like it's. Critical dog, this question, yeah.
What happened?
They said I can help Jerry and Amin with the memory leak thing, if they're still looking into that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Or do you want me to focus on something else?
What were you saying, Jerry? Oh, sorry, I was just saying, since we're talking about the build, um. The. The only thing that I see in production that maybe we need to test properly, um, we're not noticing any, um. Any issues of like topics or anything, there, there were some caching that, that we added for N plus one queries. But, uh. That's the, the biggest risk I can see, if not, I, I could start a produ- a production deployment right now.
Yeah, let's do it.
Alrighty, let's do it. Hey, um, yeah, so yeah, Ismail, let's, uh, have you worked with Jerry on that memory leak? Something maybe, it's progress, I trust, maybe we can wrap it up. Um.
Okay.
Let me ask Ian a question here, Ian, can you hear me?
Yep, what's up?
Hey, uh, do we, do, do you have any updates on, um. Our integration, POS integration, or anything like that?
It's dope, you're gonna love it.
Okay.
It's working really well, we actually have moved over to Toast, we're trying to sign up with them as a developer right now, um. Sorry, I'm multitasking, so just one second, we're helping like terminate an employee for our client right now, and he has access to critical infrastructure, and I'm in the middle of that, um. So sorry, I'm just, one second, I'm sending a response. Um, so the. Uh, square side of things is, is effectively done, I, I, I got the, the basics of confirming what we can and can't do figured out, we did some testing of different methods to pull data. Um, and what we ended up finding was that, uh, we can. Submit a, uh, a client from, let's say, let's say it just walks through the flow, a person checks in, um, at a business. And what we do is, if they are one of our partnered clients using Square, then we send that business, the user's phone number. Um, their first and last name, and maybe, maybe user ID, some metadata, something like that, but mostly what we care about is phone number and first and last name. Then the person walks up to the counter and they make a purchase, um, included in our call to, um. To Square, we're going to also add that customer to a pre-created group that we've made, which includes discounts. So by the time the customer gets to the counter, which there's, by the way, somewhere between a ten and fifteen second delay from the time that a check-in occurs. To the time that that customer appears inside of the Square, uh, point of sale system for their employees to actually see this person.
Interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty slow, um, it basically, and actually, I'm, I'm, might be optimistic on that, assuming that when a check-in occurs, we can trigger. The action, um, immediately, the API call, uh, that we're initiating, it doesn't even have to do with a check-in. Um, it is, uh, sending the information to Square pretty much instantaneously, but Square's point of sale system doesn't refresh. This user as a, uh, as a, as a person in their database for anywhere from ten to fifteen seconds. And it, we're sending a really basic set of data, it just doesn't seem like they update it every second. Uh, maybe because it gets submitted through an API, I'm not sure, um, but it does show up. In about that time. So if a person goes to the front counter, and then they say, hey, I just checked in, wanna get my discount, and they say, great, what's your name, or your phone number, they could look them up by either one. Um, and then they, uh, add products to a cart, let's say they buy a couple cups of coffee or something. Um, they will automatically get a discount in the cart because of the group that we put them in, in the Square app, that's all on Square side. Uh, and then once the transaction is completed, we created a, uh, webhook, um, that comes from Square and sends us back information. Containing that customers', uh, the customer's information from Square, so basically. In order for us to verify that a person actually utilized. Uh, a discount or, or made a purchase at a, uh, partnered business, we have to have every single transaction that occurs. With this business sent to us for review. That part, yeah, that part kind of sucks, I wish that it could be selective, but it's not a big deal, I mean, even if it was a coffee shop, what's that, a thousand a day, it's not like we're doing a thousand a second.
Right.
Well, not right now, uh, that, um, and, and it, we, we even did reach out to Square to identify if there was a more efficient way for us to gather the data that we're looking for. They confirm there's not, their API doesn't allow us to insert application. Style, um, data on their end, which would limit the amount of data that we get. So no big deal, we get it, we get a, a, a webhook that hits us, and it says. Um, here's the phone number of a user who just made a purchase with this business ID. And then if that phone number matches one that's in our database, from there, we can do whatever we want, of course, we can. Trigger whatever kind of ever actions, we want, one of the other actions that we can trigger, is we can trigger, trigger a second call back to Square that says, what did they buy? So they can include transaction data in the first webhook that they send us, but we can make a secondary call if we're interested to find out what they actually purchased and the details of the transaction as well.
Huh. That might, that might be useful to say, enjoy your boba tea.
Yep. Did you get a picture of your boba tea and share it on your chart?
Exactly, ooh, I love it, oh, that's really good.
Yeah.
Really good, okay, um, I had a couple questions, so. Wait, wait, you keep going, was there more?
Um, there is more, that, so where, where, we, so we basically got to that point yesterday by about noon. And so for the rest of the day, I had Aod do some tidying up on the front end that he's building, and the plan is that this front end. Which, by the way, is built in the same format that Jerry is already building the administrator dashboard. Or a new backend for business managers, or well, for us, for, for employees. Um, so this front end, we can just bolt on, and it has, um, basic functions, but we needed it to. Uh, be able to obviously identify our users, um, in circles and their phone numbers, as well as businesses. That's really the only data that we need to facilitate the connection, is just business IDs and user phone numbers. From there, you know, obviously, Jerry, you and, and I, and maybe I, I can get together and, and construct how we want the logic to work for this whole thing, but that's not very hard. Um, as long as, obviously, the biggest goal was, can we get the data to them, and can we get what we want back, and the answer is yes. Um, with the only caveat being the fifteen second delay, we haven't found a solution to yet. So, um, he's basically done, or actually, he is done with the front end at this point, it's not pretty, um, it's not anywhere near where we want it to be long-term, but it is functional. And I've, I've gotten him off of it so that he can move over to now working on integration with Toast. He's going through the API, uh, request process, they have a completely, completely different method of communicating with their, um, API than Square does. Um, Square is just open, they're like, hey, here's our API, here's all the documentation, do whatever you want. Um, because they set limitations, there, so we can't like destroy people's, you know, environments. Um, but, but Toast is significantly more selective, we have to go through an application process and an approval process, they have to do an interview with us. Um, and he's filling out the basic data, that's just the technical data of what we want to do, and once he's done with that, he's gonna, we have to wait for them, then he's gonna move on to Clover and to, uh, Stripe.
Okay, take a look at all of that before he submits it and make sure it's.
Yeah, he's writing it up for me.
High quality, okay.
He's using ChatGPT to write everything.
Okay, I remember my question was, um. Are, where are we, Jerry, with those deep links, uh, we think we need the deep link now.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna work on that, yesterday, we got down a radical memory leak. Well, I was gonna, I was gonna work on that, yesterday, we got down a radical memory leak.
Right.
So, about to push it today.
Okay. Do, do, does the front end need to do anything before we get this build?
Uh, no, because well, what that's gonna do is whenever they onboard, it, it's going to trigger the action queue. Like, basically, the action queue is what I'm saying, is that same thing that redirects you to the friend connect. It'll just send them to the profile, the biz profile page instead.
So all that's in place though, currently in front end.
Yep. Uh, as long, well, just the redirect, to my knowledge, I don't know anything about the condensed onboarding. And like. Oh, then just the redirect, yeah.
Okay, so we will have the capability for a business to direct people straight to their business profile.
Yep.
Okay, from a QR code.
Yep, well, okay, well, from a QR code.
Yes.
Um, okay, so right now, what we have is the first phase was going to be the. What's it called, the phone numbers for, for the review things that Ian sends out. Now, for. For a QR code being scanned and sending you to the app. Okay, so we have it, we have the, the tabletops that sends them to, that like, if they have the app. That sends them straight to the profile page. Now, if they're a new user, what I could do is take that same QR code that I'm using for the tabletops. And do something like we're doing for, uh, like the app testers, and we can like match by the IP address. And if they match by the IP address, we could identify that during onboarding.
Hmm, why IP address, if I scan a QR code. Um, it's a unique code, so that now it's deep link, right?
Wait, okay, you said a unique code, unique as to, so like. Where are they getting the, where are they getting this QR code, is it like a tabletop, or is it personalized?
Each, each business will have their own.
Okay, so it, it, I'm just thinking like a tabletop, like a tabletop QR code.
That'd be one, they might email the QR code.
Okay, so it's not personalized to the user.
No, personalized to the business.
Got, okay, so for that case, see, I can tell if they. Because it's not personalized to the user, we would have to like rely off the IP address.
Wait a minute. We, we're gonna take them, we're gonna take them to that landing page, right?
Right, we take them to the landing page, but there, there's one or two things that we can do, we can either just bring them straight into the App Store and go off the IP address. Or we can do a campaign flow where they have to enter their phone number first. And that brings them to the App Store after, and then when they enter their phone number, it'll get matched up. So we need to make that decision.
That could, that could be our speed line onboarding.
We could probably do both too, by the way, um, because you could do something like, when they hit the landing page, we store their IP. And we use that for our planned tracking, but on the landing page, we might be able to strategically ask for their phone number, encourage them to provide that as an additional means of. Confirm tracking for us, whereas IPs can change, um, especially if they scan it and then go home and do it all later.
That's kind of what we do, um, already, um, in some cases, but.